You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea Planning Board Meeting.
Which is the reason why I bought all the property in fact.
Okay, it being 6:00 PM, I will call to order the May 11th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall. We're going to be roll call Scott Self, that's me, I'm here, Richard Lane, Jane Johnson, Brandon Self, here, Michael You're.
Here.
Victoria Ames, Bill Hotwether, or Slade Karazinski is taking over for Bill.
Bill, here.
Evening, and you're here, Steve Long will sign it here, Michael Stenfield, he is here, and Brian Vertigal, he's not here. And it appears that we have a full board, so we don't need the alternates. The agenda this evening is we will approve or not approve the April 27 minutes applications in public hearings. Planning Board 23-010, that's a site plan review and it's a continued public hearing from April 27. Fields Own Land Consultants, TLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, has submitted an application for site plan review to construct a commercial landscaping facility and attached multifamily housing on undeveloped land located at the junction of West Swansea Road and West Street. So the property is shown at Tax Act 73, Lot 12-2, and is in the business district. And then we have under discussions and other business, Kelly Dunton, now site plan review determination. Now we have site plan review regulations that we've been going over. And we have a court case, actually a court decision to go over on the conditional approvals, possibly land reading workshop and any other business that may be required. So we don't need the regional impacts agenda because there's nothing new on the agenda tonight really in that regard. And so I mean a motion, we don't need that. And now for the minutes to minutes of April 27, 2023, anybody have any changes or are you concerned?
Um, just a couple of, um, on page three, um, I was wondering about the shape basically of the berm. It's like the rest is the, uh, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraph down. She asked how wide is the berm and we know already that it's 20 feet wide for days. And what I was asking was how wide is the top of the berm?
And this is on page three?
Yeah.
And how far up in the bottom is it?
Um, one, two, three, four paragraphs, um, near the end of that paragraph. So my only, I asked her why is the top of the berm that was the issue? Cause you know, you said it's 20 feet. Did they say?
I'm not sure if it said 14.
Yeah, okay, so.
Looks like it's wide enough to support the pine trees. I know that he gave us an actual number.
I don't think so either, I think that's how it was.
Yeah, totally, but who it is.
And then, um, earlier, I, um, I had asked, it's the second paragraph in the same page. It seemed important to me, I asked about who the targeted occupants would be. And the answer was that it was me, this was where it was supposed to be, hoping to be residents of the apartments.
And? And you just want that added in there?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Traveling nurses.
I think that's what it was.
What, so what exactly do you want to add? What was your hand, give me the whole sentence.
Amy asked about targeted occupants, Lesser said, um, traveling nurses.
I'm sorry, I guess I have the wrong paragraph.
You're adding that in, right? She's adding, you're adding that in, right, Victoria?
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't remember.
Second paragraph down.
Second one down on page three, but I guess at the end of that paragraph or something you wanted to add in?
On that topic.
Okay, so, okay, so, give me the quote again, please.
Amy's asked about targeted occupants.
Targeted occupants.
Yes, I don't really know. Yes, and Lesser said, you're traveling nurses. Okay. And then the other funny thing is, um, this is when we're having a work session on the site plan review. And this is on page five, and it's the third paragraph, which begins, parking was discussed. And the chair said there would be very in-depth parking lots. And I remember Sarah saying, how do I figure out all about that? And I don't know exactly how you said it, but it seemed like you said that we should, you know, not assume all.
Yes, she did say that, I'm pretty happy with that.
I think, I don't remember.
I think you do, you, something to that.
Which paragraph, which paragraph you started?
That paragraph, that paragraph right there, parking was discussed, page five, six.
Yeah.
So you want to add that in after the chair said there are very parking lots and?
So what's the addition?
So what do you want?
Well, it's your advice, the planning board, that there may indeed be, um, large parking lots in the next line or in our future.
I'm sorry, who's Sarah?
Sarah.
Is that called extension? And then it's just a, um, I think this is just a autocorrect on page two, where it talks about retention basis and what you meant to write with base, and we know that, we knew that.
Okay, anybody have anything else on the minutes of April 27? And if not, a motion with the corrections would be in order. So a motion by Richard Lane with the corrections just discussed to approve the April 27 minutes. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Jane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, let's go on that. And yeah, we don't need the regional impact vote, nothing different on tonight's. And we'll go right on to the continued public hearing of Planning Board number 23-010. And that is Fields Own Land Consultants, TLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, has submitted an application for site plan review to construct a commercial landscaping facility and attach multifamily housing on undeveloped land located at the junction of West Swansea Road and West Street. The property is attached at 73, Lot 12-2, in the business district.
Thank you.
And you're up.
John Newman for Fields Own Land Consultants, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons and Services. Also speaking tonight is the owner and applicant, John Lesser. So since the last planning board meeting, it just continued, they went before the conservation commission, who reviewed the plan because they had not been able to review plans based on the bulk storage and show on the plans. So since the planning board approved continuation of the planning board, and then they went before very few comments from the conservation commission, they, again, mentioned where we have a pear tree up the front, and then brought the caliber size of the, the trees was their other comment. So they requested that it be two and a half inch caliber. In the last planning board meeting, it was mentioned, you know, based on requirements that are written in the regulation, that it be three inch. So we, we changed plan and put three inch plus or minus on the tree. So, and that, that was basically, the conservation commission was saying that the two and a half inch caliber tree is actually a healthier tree. So they would like to see two and a half inch versus a three inch. We put three inch plus or minus on the original plan, it's a two and a half to three inch.
I just need to talk about that, because they talk about diameter at Rex height, which is like arbor's boards, they're tall. And, and that's, you know, like, you know, four and a half, five feet, this, this way to that measurement. And in the nursery tree, the measurement is lower, right? So I think, I think we need to clarify now, where a site plan review goes, where we will ask people to take. I think we get to the same place because it's two and a half up high, it's going to be like three down low.
Correct, so we're between that range, yep. John, being in, in the trades too, I mean, you discussed that at the last planning board meeting, that if you try to buy a tree, it could be two to three inch period.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's a difference, that, you know, when you buy from a nursery, you know, a tree that's listed, that's three inches, it needs to be three inches, six inches up off the, to there, that's, you know, three inch, but it needs to be that.
So that's why we changed it.
Yeah.
Between conservation commission and what the regulation is, is three inch plus or minus. There are any good sized trees that are, that have ones that's, where, where John works in landscaping, it's his own property. So some of the, the, the changes that went, we removed that pear tree that was out along Route 10. Linden trees that were, that were kind of clustered over by the driveway, they've been spread out 35 feet separation. So now you know on the primary route then. Linden tree stays fairly small, so that would still allow people driving under the tent to see the building enough, but it is broken up. Because the applicant would like people to see the building and the business, but also where the regulations are, to, to provide a little bit of buffer and some shade trees there, so. The linden, the linden's spread out along there, it's discussed prior. So, there are any discuss for the tree, tree notes, where, where a three inch caliber size, plus or minus. We added the fire system location here. We extended the stockade fence, so this was the portion along here, um, the southern part, the area here. We initially added one more than south, we added this right along here. So we have the fence coming up, we're going to this back end. Added asphalt, so prior, we did not show where the asphalt extent was for the kind of salt sheds. So we're something underneath the salt shed, and then they'll be an acre and four feet wide, like 30 feet wide, but that would be as a surface. The notes still state that would be built for the town spec for what they've done for salt sheds for the, for the town. We did not note, what I mentioned prior, John was talking about the, the height of the salt sheds, we added a note on there, that would be 14 feet, you know. We also added the note about the West Swansea company, does not, if they do not have pressure or enough capacity for the rest of use, that a well could be required, in which case we go through, they could place a well on the site, that would likely be placed over on this side. And that note was been added. We also included the note on the required approvals and listed this on the access permit. So previously, we did not have approvals required for the Swansea access permit listed, so all approvals that will be required for the permit are now. So those are the changes from the last planning board meeting, incorporating what we had in the last meeting for comments, and then also based on the, the conservation commission review. And it was discussed at her, you know, in the meeting minutes review, on, on the width and the height of this berm. So we have to drive 20 feet wide, if, if that's a four to one slope and it's a two foot high berm. So we know that now it's also like it's a two foot high berm. So it would come up in a running slope, eight feet, four feet on the top, four feet down. So a four to one slope can be mode, if Mr. Lesser decides to do these as non-bulked, stegan mode, so four to one is a very flat slope.
So you said total width at the bottom is 20 feet, you just said, total width at the bottom is 20 feet?
Yes, that's what we have drawn.
Okay, just clarifying that, all right.
Can you show again one of the, the, um, stuffy fantasy, in the prior one, it's sort of like in the mix in the trees on this section? Is it still on there?
Yes, so we have a mixed use of the trees, so we then have about half the trees on the residential side and a half on the, this side of the subject.
And then it jogs this way?
And then it jogs this way, it's on the south side, because that was brought up on, you know, to see and have a visual block, and that was like that, so it's directly on the south side.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Just curious about the dogwood, what you call it, when you claim something like that?
When you claim dogwood, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so, so we currently have three shown on there. Two, two are right in this area here, and one down towards the corner.
Okay, they, they don't make much of a buck.
Yep, and these weren't, the shrubs weren't really required as part of the buffer at all. Or as the total account, they're kind of just to make it nicer and break up the front of the, the, the span, as he does mention.
Any other questions from the board?
And even for applications, you would, for someone on mixed use, residential or non-residential. Says it may occur on separate properties as long as in a common scheme of development.
Oh, and where, where is this, you're talking about, is this some of our regulations you're quoting?
It's, I'm trying to remember exactly where I saw it, but it, it either came up in the class that was held, uh, two weeks ago, about mixed residential use, or I've come across it in the RSA. But if anyone's come across, or has been involved in that, I'd like to get that defined as to whether or not this is actually allowed because it has residential and commercial or business, and it's attached. And from the way I've written it down, see, look, I almost copied it down, sort of, it was something, and it should be in, uh, separate properties.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
But I can't even see the scheme.
I think that's a local issue. You know, I think it's up to the towns to decide if they're going to allow mixed use. Maybe not, but if it's in the RSA, they say we can't do it. I have never seen that in there, doesn't mean it's not in there, but I've never seen it in there that the towns can't do it. The towns can prohibit it, I would imagine, if they want to, unless the RSA says you can't prohibit it. But I think it's a local decision, I think so.
Have you come across any other? No, I was just wondering what the exception was that they got from the ZBI.
The special exception, they received two special exceptions, one for the bulk storage use, and the other for multifamily in the business district. But our ordinance doesn't restrict a mixed use. You know, so, and our ordinance is, um, it's restricted, restricted in nature. So if it's not listed, you can't do it.
Well, after I wrote it down, I went back and looked, it's exactly where that was.
Yeah, if it's not in our ordinance, it's, it's probably, whatever we have in our ordinance, what Senator said, is, is what we have to go by, I think. Unless it's specifically in the RSA, so we can't do it. Anybody else have anything?
One question, and it's, it's the rain garden. Do you, is there a detail, I just, okay, what I don't really understand is, um, I think there are maintenance plans for that, because that's what keeps the water out of the, or that's what purifies the water, but it goes into the rubble. So how do you?
In the smallest ones.
How do you keep that, what's, what's the way that you keep that functional?
So there's a filter layer, which is a mix of organics, they'll put like peat moss, they'll put mulch in there. It's a mix of the sand and a, a silt in there, and that kind of slows the water down to let it go slowly, let the bacteria within the soil clean the water that goes down and out. So, as you can see here, this is basically the line of being mulched on the top. There's a berm on the top, so there's, there's a similar detention base, when they're very shallow. Plantings around that, they rely on plantings to soak up a lot of water. So based on the state department, or guidance from the DMPs, they, they propose these types of plants that will soak up and also treat water. So this comes from the EBT, that's kind of the practice. So yeah, it's kind of the standard detail for the rain garden. And then below that is where your filter and your material is, that's below the rain garden.
I have to tear that one down if you're not a plant.
Typically, no, yeah. I'd say probably in the last 15 years, they've become very popular. I've never seen one that's had to be redone. People will mulch around the edges, and then just kind of keep mulch for, you know, the, the sand below will pull, dig through the mulch, but finishing it with a, with a molyte. They work, they work pretty well.
And any members in the public, how many questions on this, for this? And hearing none, if there are no other questions from the board, then I'm going to close the public hearing. But before I do, let me just go with the board. They did everything that we asked them to do. As I pointed out in the drawing, they put everything on that. The only thing that's different is about the note on the trees that are three inch caliber. They said three plus or minus, is, plus or minus, is that all right with the board here? Cause it was specified for three. And then conservation commission, in their notes, they said that a two and a half inch tree actually are preferable, because they survive that. So anyways, that's the only thing that's different that we asked them to do, we asked them three inch, they said three plus or minus.
They'll say three, we'll go with that. But you're saying, how do you go with that one?
I think three plus or minus does it, just asking the board, it's, it's okay with the board, because that isn't what we asked them. We asked them three inch, and that was that, to put it in an notation on there. So it's three plus or minus, it's a small detail, but I'm just asking the board before we close the public hearing. With me, it's fine, you know, I don't, I don't mind at all, but it's different from what we asked them to do. Everything else we asked them to do is there, exactly as we asked them to do. Anybody?
Without bounds, well, you're doing it horrible.
Well, initially, wasn't it two and a half to three?
Yes, it was, right, two and a half to three.
You can just go back to that.
Okay, you want them to just state it two and a half to three, no, three plus or minus then. Is that a consensus from the board?
Sure.
You're right, you're right. They're voting, but you can still weigh in on it, okay, can you? Michael?
I'm fine.
You're fine, yeah, it's fine, so, okay, I'm fine with it too. Richard is, Jane is, and Keith is, and Victoria, you're not fine with it?
Not, and I mean, here's, here's our whole time nursery guide, and they sell, this is a, a dogwood that comes, the standard is like two and a half to three inch caliber, and then three to three and a half inch caliber. So, you know, if we say three, we're going to get two and a half at this top. So I can be the, I can be the voice of dissent.
It's getting over here.
It's not so much in this case that I think we have to be careful in future cases. There are times when people will put in a twig, you know, what would a twig, yeah, wouldn't grow for 15 years, you would know that tree. Oh, but the conservation commission point was, I think that a two and three eighth inch tree will take root more, will more likely root and be healthy than a three or more. If you are transplanting it, you know, you bring it from a nursery and put it in the ground here and tell it that, if it's younger, when, or you know, younger and small, you put it in, it'll adapt better, that's why I said that. Okay, um, I think we should, I, I'd like to speak to that issue, but I don't want to tie it into these guys, because they want to.
Let's do that when we do the regulations, let's cover that when we do the planning, the regulations, site plan regulations, okay. So it looks like a consensus that we're probably going to have them go back to the original wording, that was two and a half to three inch diameter trees there. Okay, that's the only thing I had before I closed the public hearing.
There was, there was one other thing that was wrong, was the, the color of the building. Someone wants to say that that would be a neutral color. He did bring a sample to say, you know.
All right, let's see.
I figured, instead of bringing a sample, I would just give you what color, what color you're looking for. And going off of what I had spoke to two weeks ago, I don't really want the building to look like a regular southwestern kind of building. No, that's not, I want like a white. So anyways, I think the color scheme that we're looking at here, we're looking, looking at a Benjamin Ward, um, deep royal, which is the color. I don't know if you guys know what it's up on.
Is that blue, a blue?
It is a blue, it's a deep, it's a deep royal.
Yeah.
Yep, and then the veneer is a Thompson stone, you can actually go to Art of Britain in Swansea and check it out. It is the, um, it's the Brooklyn blend, and it's in the ledge for the veneer facade on the bottom. So it's more gray.
And that's a, that's a stone veneer?
It's a stone, it's a real stone veneer, yes.
And the color of meaning?
It's a gray.
It's a gray.
So the blue and the gray will go very well together.
So, those are the colors.
The roof is probably going to be black or, or, yes, yeah, just, yes.
Does the board have any problems with those colors?
No.
No, nobody, no, maybe, okay, yeah, thank you for bringing that. Anything else I forgot?
That was the only other item.
Okay, great, um, any other memories from the board?
Well, we did, we thoroughly talked about the salt shed, and I know, and that was mentioned in the LDA and in the conservation.
Yep, and we did, and where the, he explained it as well, and it's on the drawings as well, and it shows the apron on the new drawings anyways, where it's going to be extended to, and the height of it, we know, and they're going to use the, the best management practices and building it to basically the specs that are salt shed down here as well.
So it'll be the same color as the building as well.
It'll be the blue color here, yes. Okay, so, nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing, public hearing is closed. Board can deliberate, and like I said, they brought everything we asked them to bring, they put it on the plans. That worked out well, and conservation commission weighed in, they addressed those, they addressed them. So, um, anything else on it? Any other discussion on it, it's pretty much straightforward here. And if not, then a motion to approve, are there any conditions we're looking at? I think we, we did all the conditions that they added to the plan, so I can't think of any.
I just wanted to remind you about the phase of search condition recommended by code enforcement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they wanted to make sure that the site work was done first, the complete site work was done first.
Yeah, complete site work to grade confirmed by Fields Own, prior to operational approval, if they're going to phase.
So there should be a condition then?
Yeah, we put that, we did, yeah, you brought it up, I think, yeah. So yes, that can be a condition as well, and that condition there would be one that doesn't require a compliance hearing, because it's something they're doing to the site first, it's in a stage, the site, in my opinion anyways. You know, can't really make them do the site and then have them come in for a compliance hearing, check the site out.
We don't have to take a trip.
Again, yeah, no, but I'm saying that would be a condition that doesn't require. Pardon me?
It would fall from late.
Oh, yeah, had to make sure, that's right.
So the first would be holded items in other staff comments and departments that you do, those would be presumed to be conditions. Said, um, business own vehicles, only those vehicles to be served in, so they're not there otherwise, this, this standard, um, vehicles to be and that, um, materials to be stored in the bulk storage bins, and all of the things we have to keep out of the city. Do we need some list, or am I just asking?
I don't know that we do, you know, these are recommendations again from the staff, the planning board can either take them under advisement, or can add them in as conditions, or, or not. Um, we did discuss a bunch of that stuff at the other meeting, our public hearing, but also, it's also noted on the site plan, what it's going to be in those storage bins there. We can still add it on as a condition if, if anyone wants. Uh, we did discuss, it's in the minutes about vehicles and, let's see, you know, materials to store in bulk storage, and it's one of the two, yeah, LDA approval. So more management plan, I don't know that we, we need a store more management plan on that piece of property down there than anybody else. And, and they have a drainage plan right on here, that we can see, it's not a very complicated system there. That's what else.
We've got the other, this is the first three, I just wanted to.
I think I read it was designed AOT, standards, the stormwater management, so even though they don't.
Yeah, they did say that, that the drainage plan was, was that, they don't have the actual plan, which, I don't think.
Wait, what is the composition of covering the, the equipment that's going to be stored outdoor?
Composition of, what do you mean?
Is it asphalt, is it, is it?
It depends where it's, uh, something, they go into the plans there.
This is a here.
Yep.
What is that, so, what's the?
That would be the gravel, this, this little dotted thing right there, that dotted thing, that's gravel.
It travels, or anything that's, any oil or leakage like that, it's going to go down in the ground, but.
Um, I would say so, if there's leakage there.
Yeah, there's got to be a problem.
It would off the pavement anyway, it would off the pavement anyway, you know, just concentrate out.
I would imagine that they're going to keep their vehicles up, as most people do, so they aren't going to be leaking oil all over the place. They aren't going to be working on vehicles out there. They're not going to be working on vehicles out there, they're going to be working on inside the building there. If you're leaking that much oil out of a vehicle, you probably aren't going to be using the thing. You're probably going to have it in there. Yeah.
I also think that if that's your concern in terms of providing an area that's a current vehicle for water, you'd rather contain that to the property as opposed to having it wash out to the public way.
The whole thing is sitting on that.
I understand that, but it's only the, you know, the top layer.
Okay, so, the question is, do you want to add, Victoria wants to know, we want to add that only Mr. Lester's business owned vehicles will be allowed to be serviced, right, Victoria?
The first three bullet points.
And no derelict or otherwise disassembled vehicles, equipment, machinery or parts or tires shall be stored outside the structure. And three materials to be stored, that's always, that's covered under the ZBA and that's covered under the site plan there. But again, materials to be stored in bulk. Storage bins are limited to materials approved by ZBA, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, enlisted in the plan as note fifteen.
I may also recommend the final one.
Roof area. Roof area between the residential structure and the commercial structure shall remain open with no additional walls regardless of roof type. Yeah.
So, Mr. Lester's, they represent, they're all fine with all these things, so it's not a priority, I just think you should get it into that.
All right. And anybody agree with that? That way it goes on as conditions? Again, those have been conditions which they don't have to come back for a public hearing on. Because it's just that they have to keep those things up, have to do those.
I think we should do them because of the teeth, because we do have places in town, you know, that've got abandoned cars, basically, I call them. And it's, and it's hell, it's like I tell you that as a selectman, it's hell getting them cleaned up.
Okay, so it would be those first three conditions right there.
I have them.
Oh, you have them, okay, those first three conditions there.
I have them, and the last.
And that last one there.
Yep.
And, and also, of course, the, the state and federal town permits, we usually.
And the phase development. I already have that one.
And the phase development too, correct. That the development, the site will be brought to grade and ready for building before they do any of the, any of the buildings. And also, then you have to DOT access permit for West Swansea Road curb cut. Another condition, town Swansea access permits for West Street and West Swansea Road curb cuts. Town Swansea sewer discharge permit, town Swansea building permit, and West Swansea Water Company intent to serve. And again, all of those conditions there are conditions that don't require a compliance hearing. So, that would mean that we can approve it.
Should we put ore well and cistern in the?
Oh, in case they can't.
Just in case.
Provide the fire.
West Swansea Water Company intent to serve ore well, what do you mean, ore well and cistern?
I mean, it, it's a condition that they have to be able to be served by the West Swansea Water Company, the way that's written. I'm thinking that, you know, they're either going to be a well or West Swansea water.
They will have to have fire protection inside the apartments in a way.
They do, they're, I mean, we could put it as a condition, but it's kind of a no brainer, you've got to have water there.
Right, yeah, so I mean, if we, you know, you want to be a stickler.
The cistern is on there, the well is required.
So, maybe just.
Maybe just drop off the West Swansea water on condition.
Drop off that condition of West Swansea Water Company.
You're going to have water one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, drop that one. That's that last one there, we're going to X that now.
Going to X it out, you're not going to use it?
No.
You do want a general statement that requiring all state, federal and town permits be acquired or not?
I think we listed all the permits that they need separately.
Do you want those all in there, into the, in the, in the conditions for approval?
Or using that sentence that you just said.
That's what I was going to do, just add this sentence.
That would be, that would be fine with me, what about the rest of the board? It's, it's whether we're going to ask them individual permits, name them out, or just all state, federal and town permits, certification and our licenses as required.
That works.
That we want to have that. Yeah, that's a little clearer.
Yeah, Mike, Mike will catch it.
Okay, so we'll put it at that then. So, the conditions would be that only Mr. Lester's business owned vehicles will be allowed to be serviced, maintained, prepared on site. Number two, no derelict or otherwise disassembled vehicles, equipment, machinery or parts, tires shall be stored outside the structure. Number three, materials to be stored in bulk, storage bins are limited to materials approved by ZBA on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, enlisted on the plan as note fifteen. The roof area between the residential structure and the commercial structure shall remain open with no additional walls regardless of roof type. And the last one would read, yeah, all state, federal and town permits, certifications and/or licenses as required. You know, they have a, a plan on their, yeah. They're good with that, so. That would be the motion with the conditions, so. We'd like to make the motion one way or the other, Jane.
I wanted, no, I wanted to ask you something, but we were talking about something else. We didn't have to talk about signage tonight, right? That'll come up later.
That's, by the town, actually, that doesn't go through the planning board anymore, the signs. That goes through the planning department, they just go to get a permit.
I thought I saw someplace in here, I can't find it now, but did they say something about a sign on the building, on the roof?
Said it would be acted on later, I think, in there.
Yeah.
It said it would be acted on later in there.
It said it was on the site plan, we have no, the sign, you know, would have to be numbered separately, it was on the site plan. The note on the building was for the zoning board approval was. These, these doors being lined up right here, we have caution truck sign, that would be building up right here. And that was based on the zoning board's feedback.
Oh, that.
Because they were concerned about that traffic could cut through the building.
Right, I remember you.
And they just wanted a caution trucks, so that's the building now, that's what I saw.
Thank you. All right, I will make that motion.
Okay, and, and in, in those lists of conditions, I don't think I mentioned the, the site. What do we have as the, what are we going to name that?
A phase development approach condition?
Now, let's see, that, we'll go spell it out, that'd be, spell it out, that the site has to be prepared prior to any buildings going up, the entire site has to be prepared.
Finished grades.
Finished grades, prior to any buildings going up. That should be, that'll explain.
Well, what, what code enforcement wanted was prior to operational approval. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be prior to buildings going up, but prior to operation of the site. Because it is a landscaping business, so they could potentially operate on that site prior to any buildings going up or one building going up or, or whatnot.
Oh, that's what he wanted on prior to operational approval, that's what it means, okay. All right, then it would be that, prior to operation, operational approval.
Operational.
Approving.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Mike meant about that, now I get it. So. What did you think he meant?
The, the site is going to be totally prepared before any building or anything else went on to the, run for the site.
Yeah, but, let's see, I'd do operational approval by code enforcement. Actually, he's the owner of proved it anyway, so it's going to come down to him regardless, I suppose. But, you know, I'm with you as it was, the, all the grading had to be brought to finished grade before any buildings went up.
And surfaces, asphalt, surface, other things have to be completed, that's what I understand.
Yeah, I guess, well, it's gravel, so yeah, that would be brought up to what is, I don't know about the paving, whether you'd want them.
You might want that last.
Yeah, very last, I would think so, trucks are going to be up.
I would think that you'd want to do the gravel last as well because you're going to tear up that service with the construction machinery. So.
Normally, you know, asphalt, asphalt's usually last, yeah, it's free there.
Where Mike's tying into the certificate of occupancy of the building, meaning he can occupy and use that building until everything is at final grade.
I guess what?
You know, I understand that you want the, the site more or less graded out. The drainage and detention would go in first based on the, the notes that are on the plan. But at final grade, he'd still be digging out for foundations, slab work, everything like that. He's not going to pave until the buildings are up, I mean, you're not going to destroy the pavement, the ground until you finally.
Well, the intent, the intent looks like that he doesn't or won't issue a CO for operation off of the property. Now, let me back up a minute. You could operate off of that property with a landscaping business, with the bins and all that type of things without doing the building and the salt shed and all the other things there and the landscaping, all that business. You could just operate out of it, have the stuff dumped there and start operating before he did those things. He wants to make sure that those things are completed first, the grading is completed first and it's brought up to, or finished grade, actually brought up to finished grade. I don't think he meant that the paving or the groundwork, but finished grade, meaning the drainage work, obviously.
That's the, or it's.
For, yeah. But he wanted us to add it into it as a condition.
So, then we get into the subdivision of like, what it needs, what percentage of the thing needs to be done before we can, before we can allow them to get, to do any business on that.
It's up to Mike to offer that, I mean, to issue them a CO.
Probably say something like substantially.
Substantial, substantial was brought up in this class, we have to, it was strongly suggested that we put a number to it. And this is in three, in a pre-different areas from the planning board that are represented there.
And that was in regard to what though, was it in regard to?
Any, any applicant that's going to be building within a town. Like, you know, just in, for instance, the project on Route ten, twelve, whatever, oh, by the fairway.
Yeah, twelve.
Okay. We first went with that, we said, okay, share down the building, is that substantial? It's not really substantial, because nothing has happened for a year and a half. Okay, they got a renewal, but, you know, they have, we got to put a number on, okay. What can we accept? Some sort of completion of, of work that we know is going to, you know, be done and completed? Do we say, okay, if everything else is, you know, weather type or whatever? But it's, it's something that was brought up and strongly suggested that we put numbers to it.
But generally, that's attributed to site plan approval, how long the approval lasts. You know, if they don't have substantial, substantial improvement to the property and it's beyond the time limit of the approval, then, then it's null and void and they have to start all over again. And those, you know.
In his specific example, theoretically, the, the business could start being used with only the bins in place before the building is actually even constructed.
And that's what Mike wanted to alleviate that.
But you said that lands, about a final grade, right? I mean, he, I think we should be clear about, do we expect the buildings and apartments and everything to be built before they can start using, say, the, you know, the test for basic operations with the earth materials and storage and stuff and all that and stuff? It's, it's not clear.
So, if we require a work breakdown structure or critical gap?
If we do use it?
Have we?
Not necessarily, no, we haven't, you mean in this project right here?
Correct.
No, we have not.
Because I would say that would be the only way that you can identify a milestone that you want to tie to that certificate of completion or substantial completion. If you're going to be specific about certificate of completion or the ability to start operating, then I would say we have to tie it to a specific schedule, right, a milestone or completion of work breakdown structure, fast.
Given the mixed use of the project, we say everything has to be worked to final grade. Are you talking about the residential portion? And the business portion or work portion versus another?
Mike was talking about the entire.
Yeah, if I could add to this, the, the concern was, one, to help the business owner operate his existing business as he currently operates his existing business at another location here, which would be being able to store his bulk materials and some of his equipment and all of that and operate his off-site landscaping with this as a home base. But the concern was making sure that the stormwater was taken care of. So, that's why code enforcement would like to have a condition that the finished grade is in place prior to operational occupancy.
For the entire parcel?
For the entire parcel.
But, but he would, I mean, we're, we're running this this season, so that he can start using it this season even though he won't have the building structures.
That is the goal.
Yeah.
To make it so that he can operate off of this property as soon as possible.
So, so it's clear.
And that does clear it up, that they don't, they can't operate out of there, I mean, he does have it in there, the, it's the operational approval until the finished grades, the entire plat is done to finished grade and then they can operate.
He's specifying the time, parts.
Yeah. And leave it at that, and regardless of the buildings. Apparently, he did not mean that the buildings couldn't go up, these guys could run their business out of there while they're working on it, building their building, which is reasonable, it's, it's fine for me to, you know, they should be able to run a business as well as they're building their buildings there.
Okay, so we allow them to start their business.
So.
Two, three years down the road, they're still just running the business, so they don't have the buildings.
Then.
I'm not saying that that's what they're going to do, I'm just saying just theoretically, that could happen. How do we prevent that from happening to us?
Do we want to, you know, if, or do we need to? Yeah, we've approved a building on there, but if they don't put the building on there, how can you penalize someone for not putting the building on there? It's nothing to the down, I mean, we're regulating buildings going up on property. If they didn't put that on, I don't know, a year or two years, whatever the time might run out, they'd have to come back in again.
What's the concern of not having the building up? I guess, because.
You have an incomplete business, you've approved the business, you're counting on certain things to happen. Okay, and if it's not completed, it's, you know, it's basically a yard with storage in it.
Well, I think they've gone this far, they've gotten the plans, they've drawn it, they've hired engineers and, and they know exactly what they're going to do there. It's probably unlikely that they aren't going to build that building there and just run that business.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying for the board, we need to start putting times on it or percentages on it. Or we're going to wind up adding projects that we approved not having.
I think that's why we put in the two-year substantially.
That's a, that's a state, I believe, isn't it? Two and a five-year position.
That's, in your, decades ago, I guess. People used to get approval for something and then it would just sit there and they'd never do it. Because it was like money in the bank before the regulation changes, you know.
What sometimes people do too is they, they'll get those approval, come this, get us approval, then they'll sell the project. Like this happening on Route twelve, this, they.
It does look like these guys are going to do that, let's get back to this, to this particular plat right here. So, we're having trouble with that, Jane.
I think, I, I think I understand what Rich is thinking. And I think that most, all of us would prefer to know what's coming to our town and that we, that it's something that we can be proud to say we approved that and not have an unfinished business sitting there with stuff stored out on the yard. And I don't think that Mr. Lester has a reason and has thought about doing that anyway, I don't need a slam. Slam, but we have plenty of evidence around of that happening. And it's not, it's not a desirable thing to happen. Isn't that kind of what he was thinking about? And if catastrophes happen too.
Let's just get back to this one, let's get back to this matter at hand here and get that, that condition out of the way. And that last condition is the one that says that they will not be issued operational approval until the, the whole plat is at finished grade and the drainage is, is installed.
Right, and that's.
So, the infrastructure, infrastructure to be.
Just, let's just leave it at the, at the finished grade, the drainage and that, the infrastructure with the water, they might not get that in for a while. They might not get the electrical in for a while, things like that. It's not a huge project where you have to have a road with infrastructure coming in that way, it's just a small little plat here. And, and the code enforcement wants it up to finished grade before they can operate out of there just because of the nature of the business, unlike other businesses and so.
And then he's always been considered that range on that parcel, so range, I think that's the primary thing there.
So is that wording okay for that, that condition? Again, that the, they will not have operational approval until the whole plat is brought up to finished grade and the drainage is installed. That's, that's the condition.
Like your motion, Jane.
And, and that will be.
My motion, I have conditions of complete, to complete all site work with finished grade and drainage completed before operational approval.
Yep, pretty much. Anyone else? Yep, pretty much, okay. Motion by Jane.
I'll second.
To, uh, Richard already seconded, motion by Jane to approve with the, all the conditions. And seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I oppose.
We have your approval, good luck.
Did anybody oppose or didn't see anything?
Nobody opposed, good luck. Now, next up, we have Kelly Dunn. And, let me just read this verse for a second there and then you can come right up. That's all right, you don't come down here. Kelly Dunn is developing a salon in the multi-tenant building located at 135 Old Homestead Highway. That's over by the airport, everybody familiar with that building there. Subject property shown at Tax Map 37 Lot 2 in the Business District. Both Seven Share Beauty Salon is an expansion of a previously approved use of this property. Ms. Dunn requests a determination by the board if this proposed expansion of use will require full site plan review including a public hearing. Section 3, Silver View, the town makes one of the site plan review regulations states that the board shall have a responsibility for making a final decision as to the necessity of site plan review. And now you may come up and just tell us what you're doing there.
Um, so I am the hair spa in Keene, the San Manuel tree, and I recently purchased one of your private homes there on May 30th, and I am looking to move my business into, two, I'm turning two of the units into one. Um, so I've got from 11 units to 10. And, um, I have eight stations. They're never really full all at the same time. Um, and, so, I mean, the parking is substantial, so that's not, I don't think is a huge thing.
Okay, yeah, and it does reflect that plan of parking there.
Yeah.
And, and what is, Sarah, what is the use? Is that, that is similar?
Um, it's a barber shop, still operating.
It was Monday.
Or you are replacing that.
No, no, I'm not replacing it, you will continue to operate as well.
So just an expansion of use and essentially a change to the parking plan. And so the question is whether or not that's just going to be a simple site plan modification without public hearing or a full site plan review with public hearing.
Now, what would be changed to the parking plan, please, if that looks like.
Really just redesignating which units get cars.
Okay. And it's the same size of the parking, you know, it's the same number of cars. Oh, there it is, I was looking for that, I know I had it in the package, something like that, same size.
Yeah, there's no, there's no actual change to the exterior of the property.
No.
There's no increase in the parking lot.
No, no.
You know, they're, they're changing the interior and just expanding the use that's already approved and occurring.
So, I think would be a modification to the site plan. Anybody else?
Uh, I agree with you, Mike and Bruce straight.
Yeah, I think so.
Richard? Modification, Jane? Modification, yeah. Congratulations, modification. Okay, so it looks like a modification of the site plan.
Is there any chance that could be taken care of this evening? Just going to put it out there optimistically.
If the modification, we generally have another, a meeting, of course, and it's on the agenda. Going in there and I know that we're working on that part of our zoning that we can do that without public hearing.
Well, a modification does not necessarily require a public hearing. It's the board's discretion if the size of the modification is sufficient to warrant a public hearing.
What's anybody think? I know we've always had a public hearing on modifications, but again, this is a small modification, so.
I don't really see the difference in the parking area.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think we're just rebalancing the parking allocation, it's not really a big deal.
Yeah.
Is the interior being changed?
Um, a wall is being taken down, but as far as that, that's it. Just one wall and plumbing, electric, but that's the same.
And of course, that'd be, I mean, code enforcement anyways and fire marshal would be expecting that as well. So, that'd be taken care of. And the only other thing might be increased traffic, but.
How many customers are you going to have?
Um, yeah, turning two into one.
So.
How many customers at a time were you anticipating at your peak?
Um, a week.
No, at, at the peak.
At the peak, okay, so I have seven silos, but we're never working at the same, we're not, I have half of those at first time. Peak, maybe five silos, five, five customers.
So that wouldn't increase the traffic much?
Traffic, yeah, I don't know, seeing all the other things, so, yeah. The board wishes to approve the site plan modification this evening, and I'll see why we can't.
I'll move that we do.
I'll second.
Motion by Michael York to approve the site plan modification with inspections by code enforcement and the fire department. Second by Brandon, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Come on in.
Welcome to town.
Jane, bring this down to the site plan review regulations. And also bring this down to that court case, which has something to do with our site plan review regulations here. Everybody got a copy of that, that decision? And anybody make heads or tails out of it? Twelve pages of it?
I, do you want me to kind of?
Highlight it?
Explain what's going on here. Basically, so the way that we operate and have operated is, like this evening, you guys issued an approval and it had various precedent, actually, this didn't even have precedent conditions because they were all essentially met. But in other approvals, there'll be a list of conditions precedent and conditions subsequent. But we consider the evening of that meeting, the beginning of the 30-day appeal period or the day that follows is the beginning of the 30-day appeal period. What this case determined was that that was not when the appeal period begins. The appeal period would not begin until the signing of the plat, when full approval happens or anything. And so I've had some conversations with other communities to kind of feel out how they have dealt with this. And one community has the, the full approval, basically, as a standing agenda item. And so at every meeting, they don't identify who may be ready for a full approval, but they have that identified on their agenda so that if somebody's ready, it comes in. And then they post on their website who, if anything, actually came in for a full approval so that anybody who's concerned about a project will have an opportunity to know when the 30-day appeal period begins. So, first, are there questions on that?
Yeah, could you just give us a concrete example? So like, we take this one as an example?
This one, um, I would be hesitant to take it because we don't have precedent conditions, but if we were to take.
I can give you an example on that, I'd use that in contract law precedent and subsequent decisions or conditions. So, if, if your kid wanted to borrow the car for next week, and you said, okay, you can borrow the car, but you have to wash it first. That's a condition, and that's a condition that's precedent. They have to do it first or you can, before the contract goes, before they can take the car. But if your kid wants to borrow the car and they say, or you say, all right, you can borrow the car, but if you come in after nine o'clock, the deal's off and you're not getting the car anymore. That's a condition subsequent. So that means that the, the condition was, I mean, the approval was granted and it went on until they didn't meet the subsequent part of it. Meaning they came in at nine o'clock, so it's null and void after that. And that would apply to conditions if, if they, if a person didn't get, let's say, the D O T permit or whatever it is, or cur cur or something from the D O T, then we, we made a final approval on the plat. But if they didn't get that permit from the state, then it's null and void, they don't have their approval anymore. That's a subsequent one.
So, a precedent is one, in, in your case, we could go back to the campground approval and look at, I mean, a precedent condition, I can't remember if that's what I said. But when you guys were talking about them adding the fence on either side of the maintenance building and increasing landscaping for screening around the fence and the maintenance structure, that was a precedent condition, so you guys had to approve what they put on the plat after you had already granted an approval. So that was precedent, and then the plat signing could not happen until the board approved of the addition of that landscaping and the fence. And so this is saying that the 30-day appeal period would not begin until any of those types of conditions were met.
And that final approval would be done at a compliance hearing. That would, that would, you know, when approval is done.
But not on, like, not all approvals require a compliance hearing, because it depends on if it has to be added.
The way I read the, that decision there is that the ones, that the, that the state legislature gave planning boards the opportunity to approve a plat without that subsequent conditional, I mean, you know, conditional approval with a, a, conditional, or a conditional hearing, when my.
Compliance.
Compliance hearing, right. So, the, the planning boards wouldn't have to always have a compliance hearing and string it out to a compliance hearing to do final approval. They could do a final approval if those conditions were as they stated in the R S A. Let us just do administrative and so on and so on. So, what, it looks like one of the justices said was, that is a final approval. If you, if you grant it for that, because those conditions don't have to be met, they're already met. It's subsequent, uh, decision, a subsequent condition on it, meaning that the plat has been approved, that's final approval right there at that meeting. But if they don't come up with those.
Permits.
Permits or whatever it is, then it's null and void. All other approval, it says all other approvals in the R S A's have to go through, have to be done at a public hearing. And that could be a final approval at a compliance hearing.
Okay, so when this here, precedent would be when we, when the court came in, putting in on the plat, the fence, the drainage, et cetera, et cetera, that precedent.
Things we asked them to do, the condition, we're talking about conditions.
Wait.
Yeah.
Before, we would say, okay, we can approve this, then subsequent conditions of the D O T, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
That's right, yeah. So, meaning, and the way I read it and understand it is that if we approve those types of conditions, it can be considered by the courts as a final approval and the 30-day clock starts right then and there. The, the precedent conditions, meaning putting that fence on there and whatever else the planning board wanted to change, that requires another public hearing, which will be a compliance hearing or a continued public hearing to the next one until they get it on the plat, then the planning board gets a final approval.
The term we want that we, probably the court to develop a group.
Yeah.
Is that a, is this a precedent or is this a subsequent?
Subsequent, because if they don't do it, they don't get the operator on there. It's not that, it has to be something that has to be added to the plat because they had something wrong in the drainage, it's something that had to be done before the planning board can give final approval. So, the planning board votes to give an approval. And when that vote is done, and if it's a final approval, that's when the 30-day clock starts the next day after that. Oh, not necessarily when the letter goes out or any of that type of stuff, and not necessarily after the plat sign, the plat is signed either.
Well, and that's what's also different about how we've been doing it.
It is.
Typically, we don't sign the plat until after the 30-day appeal period has ended. So, I don't know how you guys want to handle this or if you want to change anything because it hasn't actually been a problem, but this court case means.
It could be.
It could be.
It's showing us what they might decide, because they didn't fully decide on the whole thing because of the way this weird case went. Was that they actually had decided that that first approval that they had done, the 2019 or whatever, the approval that they had done, was actually the final approval and not the 2020 approval. They threw that one out.
So the 2020 could not be appealed.
It could have been appealed, so they didn't address those particular problems there. They considered, you guys read the, the thing there, but what it was, was they made an approval for multi-use, actually, like this one here probably. And that the contractor did not bring in the proper drawings and submit them electronically and the drawings to be signed within the 90 days, as it is in their conditions and the regulations, their own regulations. So, they were under the impression that, well, since they didn't do that, then it's null and void. And they had to have a re-hearing to re-approve it. Well, the re-approval process was unnoted in their regulations as to how you do it. So the court said, well, that thing is null and void because it doesn't say anything about a re-approval hearing there. So they went back to the original approval, which was the 2019 one, and said that, well, in those regulations, it says that you have to bring in those drawings within the 90 days, but it also says that the site plan is good for five years. So the, the judge looked at that and said that, well, the thing has been good for five years. This is only one or two years later, so the thing is still good, and so that final decision, decision is the final one. And that the, was it, was the, the butters had missed a 30-day appeal period in that first 2019 decision. So that's, that, that's a really confusing one there, if it was. And it's confusing and they didn't really decide on some of the stuff that it showed how they may be deciding on it if it comes to court as to the subsequent, uh, conditions.
It also kind of seemed like, in this case, they didn't really understand that a majority of approvals have precedent and subsequent conditions placed on them. I mean, almost every approval that you guys grant has those types of conditions.
They have, that's how we've been doing it.
And it seems like there was a misunderstanding that that's very common practice for land use boards.
Yeah, and they didn't see it, they're looking at it more in terms of contract law, it seems, rather than really zoning and planning. But if that's the way they're going to look at it, then, then we probably ought to do a few things with the site plan regulations to get ahead of that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, finish up.
And, I lost my train of thought, so, that's all right, go ahead.
All right, to kind of give us a little breathing room. Going, listening to that program a couple of years ago, gives me a little knowledge of what's dangerous. Under 67443, under J, we can require, and it was strongly suggested, a preliminary review of all projects. And by doing that, we can set up, obviously, we get to see everything and review everything, but we can set up our precedent thing, but no clock starts on any, any part of it until there's a formal presentation to us. But, as I say, it was very, very strongly suggested that we incorporate that in our site plan review regulation.
That we, that we actually have the applicants do that, I'll, just, let me know, I don't have my book with me.
It's on page 445, and 67444 J.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, and it says that the planning board may require preliminary review of site plans.
And that, they strongly suggested that we incorporate that into our, our site plan review. A number, apparently, a number of districts or areas do that. It would just, it would give us breathing room and allow the applicant to, to take care of and modify things as we see that, you know, we would correct it and have it required. of and modify things as we see that, you know, we would correct it and have it required.
For, especially for larger projects, gives us a better look and gives them a better look at what we're looking at before they actually do the plans. You know, those types of reviews are for that, because they have to know what the planning board is really all about, you know, what they're going to require them to do on their plan before they spend a bunch of money to draw them out like that.
So when does the clock start?
It doesn't start until
They finally apply.
Until, you know, all those things are done and they give us a formal presentation, that's when it starts.
Okay.
It could be a month, it could be two weeks or whatever.
It starts when we accept the application at a public, then it starts, that 65-day clock you're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
And we could, we could word it such that we have the discretion to weigh that preliminary if it's a small project. We feel that, you know, the person has come in and they've done, you know, done their due diligence and presented it, you know.
Oh, we can still strongly suggest it without requiring it to be done. And if they fail to do it, and they don't have everything that the planning board wants, and the planning board, they either give the planning board an extension of the 65 days, or they get a decision yes or no. You know, we can do it that way, too. Instead of requiring them to yet go yet another step if they don't want to. If they think they're ready to come to the planning board, they should be able to come to the planning board.
They can, they can come to the planning board, but, you know.
I'm, I'm saying that then that process allows us to go through the plans like we're doing here and allows us to, to have them come back for different things that maybe change or some on, so they get, you're concerned about being forced into a decision after 65 days.
Which, which has happened to us, yeah. With the preliminary hearing, you know, it's no harm, no foul. You know, but it gives everybody a chance to look at it, digest it, and then come back.
Yeah.
Would that have to be notice?
No, there's no public notice, we can apply it to that.
Can we do something, like they say, that's proper, to put an option on it where the board can require a preliminary hearing, or the applicant can require a preliminary hearing?
Right, let's see, they can ask for one, you know, they can
Conceptually, right?
We've had, we've done
We've done conceptuals all the time, we can do it if they want to.
It's to their advantage to do that. You know, if they want to come in, especially with a large project for a planning board to start looking at it.
You could, you could put in there, highly recommended.
But since you did that, you feel, you know, a good way to go out.
Yeah.
But again, it's up to them to do that. If they don't want to go through that preliminary part of it, they think they're ready to come to the planning board and they present their drawings and so on, the application and stuff, and we can either accept it or not accept it. We don't think we have enough information, we don't have to accept it.
But if they've come in and they think they've got it, and they make a presentation, does the clock not start? Like they click on all their different things?
If the planning board considers it a complete application and accepts it, or it starts.
But if not, the clock doesn't work.
Because this one
We don't accept it, no.
This one wasn't complete, right? And then we close the plant, the public hearing?
No, no, this, this one was complete. When we accepted it as complete, then we looked it over and sent them back and had them put on the fence, we had them stretch some trees out, have them put a bunch of different stuff on there. Those are like conditions, but they, instead of having a compliance hearing, they came back with them on our continued public hearings.
On a larger project, you're right, maybe. They should come in first. And that would have to be our determination.
Yeah.
Just gives us some leeway.
Yeah.
Well, so with larger projects, we do recommend that, you know, like, full disclosure, very soon you guys are going to have a preliminary conceptual consultation with FWM for their proposal at the south end of the airport. And I had a meeting with them today, I've had several meetings with them over the last year, as they hopscotch across Swansea trying to find an appropriate site to build their facility. And so they are very excited to do the preliminary consultation with you, but not all developers are excited to do something like that. And if it becomes a requirement, my concern as staff is with the spacing of your meetings, let's say somebody came in today for a consultation and they're trying to get construction started before the season ends, and so they have to get all of their permitting in place in addition to their town approvals.
And they gotta get a bid for the bar.
Well, if, if you guys said, hey, we love it, you're ready for a public hearing, that doesn't really leave enough time to notice their project for the next meeting. So that's pushing them out a whole month before they can even start the public hearing process. And then that can take multiple meetings, and so you may be pushing their, their site plan approval or conditional site plan approval out two months by requiring the preliminary concept.
Well, this is that little bit of shame on you to come in here so late in your planning schedule. You know, your ability to plan is not my crisis.
Well, most of the larger developments do begin conversations with staff a long time before they bring something to the board, because we help them develop a plan set that you guys will be able to decipher and feel comfortable with. You know, a plan set that's already meeting the regulations.
You know what we like.
Yep, I break your regulations, so I do know what you like.
Let's get back to the conditions, resolve that. Because we're, still working through our site plan review regulation, we can add that in, the one that Richard was talking about. But back to the, whether we're going to mention precedent or subsequent, conditions or not, they aren't, they aren't mentioned that way in the RSAs, but they're mentioned that way with the court, court was looking at that. One of the other things they're looking at in there was what the intent of the planning board was when they made an approval. Did they intend for that approval to be a final approval at that meeting, or did they not intend for it to be a final approval? They look at that when, when they're judging the cases as to 30-day, 90-day.
I, I guess in, in our minutes, we should have something like that mentioned if we don't want to do a final approval.
I've got a suggestion we can do in our site plan review regulations, you know, but it, it sort of contradicts what the legislature has said and really hasn't looked at very, very carefully, but it would go for intent of what the board intends to do and why they're doing it. And that would be having to do with the subsequent one precedent ones. And I have it just written down in here. We have on page 13, yeah, page 13 on our site plan review regulations, and I'll read it off, but it's, it says pursuant to RSA 676, four I, I, one, I, and that is that conditional approval that says that the planning board does not have to hold a public hearing if it's administrative and so on, so, or permits and those types of things. That's what that RSA is. So we have it in our regulation, it says pursuant to RSA 676, four I, the board may grant conditional approval of a site plan application only when such conditions, and it lists those conditions from the RSAs. So I suggest that we take that sentence and put pursuant to RSA 676, blah, 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 the board may grant conditional approval of a site plan application without further public hearing. We add that in there to make it specify, without further, further public hearing, only when such conditions, and then we leave the thing R, administrative, and all the way down through there. Then we come to B, and B says now, if a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to 6A in this section, which is one we just talked about, the conditions need to be met within one year or the approval is null and void and the applicant must rescind, if they have application. I suggest we take that out of there and we have a read like this. If a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to 6A in this section, it will be considered a final approval, appealable under RSA 67715. That's the whole thing, that appealable part of that 30-day thing. So if we're making a final decision, which we are, because these are administrative, they don't have to come back for a compliance hearing, we're pretty much saying, as the judges in this court case said, is that that is a final approval. And if those conditions aren't met, then, then the, everything is null and void. So we change, again, if we change the wording, it says if a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to 6A in this section, it will be considered a final approval, appealable under RSA 67715. That way, we're saying that the 30-day clock started right then, and we did it that way. Then if we have down on C, where it says if conditions are met within one-year timeframe, the approval becomes final without further public hearing, we get that out of there and we reword it like this, that says if the conditions are not met within one-year timeframe, the approval becomes null and void. Meaning that that's a subsequent condition and that they have a year to get those permits or whatever, and if they don't get them, then that approval is null and void. But for all intents and purposes, it is a, an appealable decision when the board puts on it. Or then we have that last one, which we wouldn't change, it says all other conditions shall require a public hearing and notices provided in RSA 676, four I D. And that's the compliance hearing and that's when the board does a final approval there. So that would separate the subsequent conditions from the ones we need a public hearing for. And it would tell the applicant the intent of the board, that the final approval, approval after that, for the appeal part of it. And the other, after the other public hearing, obviously, is a, the final approval after a compliance hearing, yes or no, which would be the appealable part of it there. So I'm suggesting that, I'm just looking for input here. That's one way we could specify or clarify what we're doing here on this board.
What was the two-year thing that the court referred to?
Two-year, was it in the, in this court case here?
Yeah, it was something two and then five-year.
It was the five-year, yeah, completion, it was, I don't know if it was two-year, there was a time limit they had, there was a 90-day time limit they had to bring in the drawings, the plans and submit them, and they could get an extension of another 90 days for that one. And it was, the approval was for five years, providing that they met all of those, all of their conditions. And that the court determined that, yes, they met those conditions and that the approval was still good. That's why they, throughout the other one, decided that the 2019 one was, was the one to go by. And I wouldn't have, you know, if I was a judge, I would read it the other way, because in the RSAs, it says that the approval does not become final until those, all those conditions are met, including the subsequent conditions. But the justices decided differently, that they would look at it another way.
Does this need to be turned into law for the weeks of really worrying about it? Because they disagree with each other.
Well, they're suggesting that the legislature might want to take a look at, at that, because there's kind of weird, weird areas there in the law. And they probably should, to clarify it a little bit better. But we, for our own determination, and if we get, I don't know, someone, or something taken to court, we ourselves ought to know when we're making a final approval and when we're not making a final approval. And this would let us, in our own regulations, let us know that, yes, we're making a final approval tonight, 30-day clock starts, or compliance hearing, then the final approval comes. And it also ought to be written out in the determination order, you know, when it's a letter sent to the person that this is a final approval under such and such of our regulations. We're considered a final approval, and it's 30 days.
When you sign the plat, is there a stamp that says the 30 days are starting?
No, it doesn't, that's in it, but that's another thing to bring up, because at our last meeting on page 11, we had, in the very first paragraph, it's D, I'll just read it, it says approval of the site plan shall be certified by written endorsement on the plat and signed and dated by the chairman of the, of the board. And I had taken that out and put in final approval, but that won't work this way, that should be put back to approval shall be certified. Because final, we're saying final approval will be in these circumstances here and not that. So we should take that out, as I had suggested we put in the last time. But if we're going to do it, to keep it clear as to when we're issuing a final approval, that's a certification of approval, this is the final approval, and laid out in here. So comments, you know, what are we?
Question, do we, do we get town council review of these drugs?
Yes.
So, so if there's anything that's in harm
Once you guys land on your final version, it will be reviewed by town council, and then any problems they have, I'll tell you guys, we had to change these parts, sorry.
It makes sense, but your proposal makes sense to me, Scott.
Yeah, I agree. It makes sense to me, but again, it goes against what's in the RSAs. But, but still, we should as a board know what we're trying to do, and, and even if it's against the RSAs, if the courts are going to look at them in a different way, then at least they know what the planning board was doing and what their intent was, regardless of whether it was in the RSAs or not. They say, okay, this planning board intended to, it's to be a final approval here, 30-day ran out after such and such date. So I think maybe, I don't know, put those wording in there like this, Sarah, what do you think? You've read the whole court case and all that stuff.
I, I will type it into the regulations and I will reread it and then I'll say, yes, it looks great. I mean, I think it makes sense sitting here right now.
And there is another, on page 10, too. Because we're talking about board action on a completed application, in that first paragraph, that the board shall act to approve, conditionally approve or disapprove the completed application in 65 days, it's got the 35, 30 days acceptance. And I think we have a note right there that approval or disapproval will be by affirmative vote of the majority of the board members present. I'll let them know right then and there, that's how an approval is going to be. We have that elsewhere in these regulations there, but it should be there under approval as well, just to clarify, that that's how we're going to approve or disapprove a plat, by affirmative vote of the majority of board members present.
May I go back to preliminary review?
Yeah.
There's one other thing that I have jotted down. When flatly presented, and also, I guess, over here, presented the traffic study, we had some concerns to the validity of their traffic study. Part of the preliminary review, anything that's presented to us similar to that, we have the ability to request a third party to come and do that and check and validate that. If everything stops because, or until that is validated. So again, this helps us, it's not something that's on purpose, but I think, again, that's strongly suggesting that that in there.
It's up to the board, you know, we want to put that in there and just put it to the board, see whatever their opinion is. Now, we're talking about adding in a section in our, in our site plan review regulations that says that a preliminary review is mandatory, unless the planning board decides to wait it. So, let's see, and my view on it is different from your view, Richard, because I, I think that if they want to come in, it benefits them, it doesn't benefit us, us really, it benefits them more. And it's a good idea for them to come in for something like that, a larger project especially.
The work is something found.
Yeah.
And again, another one, the property value thing, therefore. If we have preliminary review and gone through the whole thing before the clock started, we could have put it on hold and required that outside value addition evaluation of the projects, either subject to validate their point or contradictory to them.
We could have, but they would have challenged us on that, because it was
We have the right to do it.
But the ZBA, we have the right to do it, right? And we can do it regardless, we just can't make them pay for it.
And the counter argument would be, you have to treat everybody equally.
Literally.
Equally, you know, so, I mean, he brought that up. If you, if you require it for one, you require it for all.
You're referencing winning point?
Traffic study?
A traffic study, a property appraisal, any, any things you put on them. They're, they're going to go to court and say you have, you haven't done it, anybody else, so it better be in the site plan review that maybe over X number of square feet or something, you require this.
Regulation said they have the discretion to require this and ask the board to approve it after that work.
Yeah, but you're right, yeah.
Right, but the other, I, I mean, it can be in the regulation, but it can go to court and then you're, yeah, but somebody's paying the bill.
Yeah, they are.
And then our lawyer's going to say, you know, we really can't win this.
Yeah. So Do something like that, we got to make darn sure that we know the good reason for it, you know, if we don't treat everyone fairly, or if it looks like we're not treating everyone fairly, require one of them and not the other, we have to have a good reason, put it in the minutes, that's exactly why we want that.
No, if, if we feel it's a blatant misrepresentation of something, then we have the right to do it and should have the responsibility to do it.
I think of something that happened over here on West Street a number of years ago, and that's a project that has never been finished after what was drawn to be. And we, I felt very strongly that we should have had our own soil test. It was so wet.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
And there, there had been storage of old vehicles there for many years, and we could have been worried for it, but now there exists And we could have been worried for it, but now there exists, I think, two double unit.
Right, we allowed phased in on that one. I think we allowed phased in on that project.
We did, yeah, they were phasing that one in, but they.
They built it, they went in.
For the soil test, that's why we have a soil scientist stamp the drawings. You know, they have to, if there are wetlands or whatever delineated on the drawings, the planning board generally requires a soil scientist to stamp that, as well as the engineer.
They aren't still, I mean.
I don't know, I can't imagine that with all the, suppose it's shorted and housing anyway.
Yeah, right, well. There's a reason to that. So how would this, I mean, we've kind of processed our regional impact, right? It's not over this, right? So I'm wondering how this process for preliminary review would work. So, so, you know, without making it be a whole other layer for the developers representing it, okay? So, how would we know that we wanted to do it, or be sure of it? So we, we ask it of everybody, do we have a step in our, in our meeting where we say, you know, is there anything coming up that we need to, or we could do that, or we could do it?
We'd have to rely on the land use report really to tell us.
Well, then, it, I, I do still think there would need to be a threshold that is identified in the regulations, because I wouldn't be comfortable with that personally.
Couldn't be unreasonable.
I don't think that would be reasonable.
But when we sit here and we see a plan for, for Sun Moon, should I do that, though, they're on a small lot, wouldn't that give you a clue that maybe we should take a real good look at that? Before, more than we see it?
I know, I know what you're talking about, we all know the plat you're talking about, and we all know that it met the regulations.
At the time.
I mean, that was, at the time, it doesn't matter. Yeah, but it, but it does matter, that time is then, you know, preliminary or not.
I mean, the point is, it was really complicated, and then you felt like, I mean, it would have been good to have an additional, more time, maybe we should.
But, but for what, though? Like, everything on that particular project met everything here, so all we'd be doing is delaying the, the person, the applicant, you know, you wouldn't have stopped it.
So what you're saying is more, more information, like, the phrase, the traffic study, stuff like that. Things that they, that would be discretionary.
The traffic study, if it's, if something's being built on, we'll say, beside Route 10, Route 12, Route 32, can we have them, or make them do a traffic study? Or is that up to the state, because those are all state maintained highways?
That particular project, the state said it didn't require a traffic study.
But if, if these guys are talking about making people do traffic studies, would that only pertain to, like, the town-owned roads, or would that pertain to?
Like Sarah was saying, it's got to be a threshold, somehow, there's got to be some kind of a threshold there. If we're going to do that type of stuff, usually it's a case-by-case basis. Landlord looks at it and says that, yeah, well, maybe we need a traffic study here. And that other one there, talking about a traffic study, the state said, no, you don't need a traffic study there. That's all right.
How did that, how did market back?
How did what?
How did it get itself?
The state, I think, required that.
That was their decision.
I think it was the conversation between the state and market basket, and the volume of traffic that was anticipated, and.
And that's how the traffic light.
Right, that's why you had the traffic light set up, and what they neglected though was the pedestrian cross and from the housing across the street, they really did.
We're working on fixing that.
Yeah, I know we are, I know we are, hindsight, we fixed something we didn't.
And then I think they improved Ashell Road.
Yes.
They spent some money on that, just.
So it has a better view, yeah.
Let me ask a question regarding the application before us tonight. Would a preliminary conference, whatever you want to call it, have what to like, changes that we wanted to make during the course of the hearing?
You know, no, it's, it's possible, you know, some of those things we might have.
I think the fire system.
Yeah, done on, something like that, but not everyone, not everything.
You know, I mean, we think it's like, okay, put that fence across the property, would that have come up?
It may have.
Been a preliminary conference?
It may have come up, but still, it came up in the public hearing.
Yes.
With no problem, it came up, it was addressed, they did it, we approved it.
It would be a corporate applicants.
The other question is, if, if the preliminary consultation becomes required, it, whatever threshold, there also needs to be some language saying, what is a preliminary consultation? What is, what is required to be prevented? Because I had that very conversation today, they said, what do you require? And I said, well, some people seem to draw things with crayons on paper towels, and that counts. So, a concept plan, we're going to get something much more detailed from Webb. I think we're going to be really impressed that it's just a concept plan. But that threshold should also be identified as what you guys want to see if you require a preliminary consultation. Because for it to be useful to the board, the town, and the applicant, you, you have to know what you're asking for. And as it is right now, we don't have anything that says what we're asking for.
Should there be additions to the, some other checklist?
I think we're just duplicating ourselves, duplicating, we already have that for the site plan, that checklist, and it would, what would be different, and is on that list already?
I mean, we might want to say identify water and sewer capabilities beforehand. I know, well, is it on here?
Yeah, it's on.
I mean, location and type of proposed sewer disposal system, all you can say is, I'm going to hook up to the sewer. And then we come in here, and then the sewer says, we have a phosphorus problem, we can't take this.
Then we don't approve it.
Then, yeah.
No, that's what, that's what we're talking about, pre-approval. Let them know that they need to contact the sewer department before they get here with their plan. Because we need a letter saying that they can.
We do, but, you know, it's not really up to us to do their work for them. You know, they're the developer, the alderman, they're the developer, their engineers generally think of those things.
Well, if we're just trying to make it so that we can make a decision in a timely manner, you know.
I don't.
And if you're, if you're changing a neighborhood, we could say that they need to have an appraisal study, or something.
We could, but, you know, I mean, not necessarily in a checklist, right? We're not going to make every single developer appraisal on a checklist.
There was an NA, or waiver.
That's right.
Right?
I can, I can see a, a point with the appraisals, because having done many myself as a realtor, appraisals can take time. And if you do them, like, Richard wanted to have that appraisal done and extend it out, we ran up against that time clock, because in my mind, I already knew that it's not a bad idea, but there's no way an appraisal can be done in that short amount of time that we had to approve or disapprove it.
And, and had that first appraisal not been done, the one that the ZBA, they rely on for the ZBA, has had not been done, and the time clock was running out for the planning board, you know, they couldn't do an appraisal in that amount of time, then they don't get the approval.
Right.
It just goes, well, the planning board does not have enough information, we needed an appraisal, you guys would make an extension, so we disapprove it, come back when you have the appraisal, if you want to do it again, that's how those things are addressed.
But isn't that a case where a preliminary, you speak things up a little bit?
Well, I don't know about, about speaking things up, possibly, you know. Again, you know, we're, we aren't working for the contractor, you know, we're, we're just deciding on what they give us for information, and we can ask for information, like we always do.
We're, we're working for the town.
We are, yeah.
But, yeah, just any information we can ascertain or gather before we get into the actual timeline, for me, it's a benefit to the, to the town, to the board, so.
Well, then, then maybe instead of requiring it, because there is a problem on a threshold and all those types of things, maybe before that, then maybe, maybe, you know, not as a board, but individuals can meet with the land use office when somebody brings in something, you know, just preliminary, going over it, whichever. And if you see any red flags there, bring it up to Sarah, and Sarah can bring it up to the contractor. There's something like that, I don't know.
But we, we can't, can, can we, she has plans in the office, can we actually go in there, and not as a board, but as an individual member, and see them? Or is that considered a board meeting, which we can't do individually?
I don't know, she'd really have plans there, but she'd have knowledge of what's going on, and you can definitely go in as a private citizen or a board member and say, where are they?
Well, I, I have gone and talked to her quite a few times, but.
Yeah, okay, well, but, you know, that can be done, and those concerns can be brought up then and there, and Sarah can transfer them to, yeah.
But you sometimes don't know what you're looking at, unless you see some plans.
No, you don't, right.
It sounds like we're looking for a tool that will help us have enough time to process a really complicated proposal. And it sounds like the, the idea of a preliminary meeting really is handled by staff, as far as I can tell, because you do go over everything with, many applications, right? As far as I know, I don't know what goes on in there, but it seems like when they come, you know, we've got so much background information, the checklist is executed, oh, we just have to do that stuff, right? I didn't make that. So, and we've got, you know, a high-powered staff, we've got, my dad's in this working on everything, you know, we've got many, many staff who do that stuff. So, in some ways, I feel like we're capturing a lot of that, except for the extraordinary things, like, you know, do we really need a, you know, the creative zone, do we need a, you know, does this feel like it's, it's probably much higher level than sort of the run-of-the-mill stuff? And those, but again, maybe, you know, one of the, it's, it's a really big part, you know, and we want to ask, right, and we really want to, we want everything of that, so.
And we can still ask for those, without a preliminary or with a preliminary, we can still ask for traffic studies and the, you know, any appraisals, any of that type of thing. And ask them to do it, and have them pay for it, that's, that's in our regulations, we can do that.
Could we have a staff update at one of our meetings, just where Sarah Julius just tells us what's in the pipeline, and say, what do you think about this warehouse going in this location? What do you think will, you know, they're proposing 44,000 square feet or something?
Do that, or just talk on the phone, you know, just stop in and see what's in the pipeline.
But like Mike said, is that, working outside of this?
If we're going to get a preliminary on that, you know, we probably want a pretty complete set of drawings there. If you don't have a complete set of drawings, then when you do get the complete set of drawings, then you're asking the questions, and it's all over again and all that, the preliminary is just for conceptual design on there.
Well, let's not call it, let's, let's say, 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 there's something common, right? I feel like we should all know, you know, we should just be the ones who remember the, you know, champion, and of course it's going to be on the stat time, or on the one we're in, right? So.
Oh, that's okay, we're taxpayers. So we're just offering guidance, maybe?
Yeah.
We're just offering guidance, to say, you know, like, I'd really like to know what this is going to do to the neighborhood, I think we're going to need an appraisal.
I feel, I feel like I, I just need more time to think, going forward, that's all that. So, so if you, Sarah, were to say, you know, Webb is coming with more blah blah, and it's here, and this is roughly what it's going to be, and I would go, oh my, you know, or not, you know, we should, we ask them to, you know, so, so just start to, you know, very easy, easy, not detailed, not exactly how they're going to get all the water off the bus, you know, but, you know, just, just an idea. Is there any problem, you know, telling us that is the board?
I don't think there's a problem, it's just there's not always a long lead time. So, you know, I mean, with, with Webb, for instance, there's a very long lead time, because we've been working with them for a very long time, and they've been looking all over southwestern Hampshire to relocate their Keen's property. So they're coming, heads up, I think it's 45,000 square feet.
What is Webb, and what do they want to do?
Diplomacy Supply Company, basically.
Yeah.
They're next to Fairfield, so, well, that's the Keen Chrysler.
We can visit the Keen one, they're just going to be making a better version of that here, including the Keen one.
Yeah, because they're getting too busy for, and it's a terrible place to get in and out of, and the tradesmen, they always have trouble in there.
And where, do you want to tell me that?
Do you know where the runway fun park is? That's where.
Not going to have any.
In that location?
In that location?
This is the one.
That's what's being proposed, pending approvals and such. They haven't purchased the property yet, they do have a purchase and sales agreement for runway fun park, and if all of the approvals go through for site plan and zoning and everything, they'll also be coming to you guys with a boundary line adjustment request between the fun park property and the one to the west that has, it's undeveloped, because they need a couple more acres to do what they'd like to do. But they'll tell you all about it either on May 25th or June 8th.
So now when I drive by, you know, I can start to think about it, imagine it, to think what issues might be, and that gets me really cooking.
Is there any idea of the flight?
We were discussing that today, and.
A foot lower than the post office, probably, because the post office is above a foot high into the flight path.
They'll, they'll be working with McFarland Johnson, who was recommended by the airport director, because they have developed plans for the airport, and we discussed the FAA permitting, but also, the building could potentially be our full 45 feet. They're not proposing anything that high, it's, it's going to be a much shorter building, but the Ferris wheel has life on it, so if they want to go through more permitting with the FAA, they could completely exploit our height regulations for that area.
Yeah, because FAA has all total control over that.
Yep.
Yeah, why not?
Hopefully, the technology's getting better too, for the flight plan thing.
They just have to crash the Keen on the apartment, build themselves. I guess we don't have to worry about the trails on that runway park anymore.
Really, what's your opinion on our, on the preliminary, if you have one?
Yeah, well, actually, Richard and I talked about it a little bit, and I think my, well firstly, the initial discussion about applications going to sooner, I think Sarah's right, the runtime is a little too short, and that, not just with permanency. So we were talking about whether this, if it's off, those times of this might just change rapidly. And so we teach it as quickly as we can, but very quickly, we told the viewing members, it'd be a funny young thing, twice the population. In my house of permanency, I think that could get rid of, like, weather fast. We saw it with ZBA just this last week. As for preliminary review, I see there are two of these, I've got it, nobody did a grand tour preliminary review, but their preliminary review was administered. And so, you know, regulations, pickets, and we, the town planner, town manager, we bring all the partners together that were applicable to the case, they reviewed, put together, or the department reviewed, but they're clearly saving their side of the house. So we want staff to be a part of that process, we can arrange something like that. If we already do something like that anyways, it's just less formal in that sense. Yeah, that, that's how I'm experiencing it, I think there's, I can see in perspective that comes from Richard and this, that there is a, a clear benefit, because you want to have as much time as you need to review it, we also have to recognize that, and, you know, we're applicants, and we're going to do this, we need to make sure that we're getting them through the least amount of time, because that's where the court cases are difficult for us, when it looks like we're preventing them from constructing. But that's how my two cents on it, I don't really add a whole lot.
Good, good to hear, okay, so a different, different perspective, different view on?
The one thing I also wanted to ask is, if you really figure out, like, the threshold for which we're requiring it, right, so if we're, I guess, you know, to what you said, we have to be fair, right? So we have to document who we're requiring to do it. So are we going to say to this little developer, or not even, are we going to say to the small homeowner who just purchases a lot, you know, you have to go through this process to build a single-family residence on your lot, right? Or are we going to draw that line, if you want to do five acres or more in sub-development? Where do we, where do we draw that line?
Yeah, definitely have to be a threshold, single-family is beyond our purview, you know.
Right, I was just using that as a.
I see, I figured you were, just making sure, right, but, yeah, we would have to have a threshold there, and that comes into problems, I think, I don't know, I don't think.
For, for argument's sake, this application that was approved that ZBA, does the board feel that this would have warranted a preliminary conceptual consultation and been beneficial?
Do you now?
Nope.
No, this isn't right.
Catch this.
Yeah.
Would this be large enough to have merited a requirement somehow? I'm just trying to put into, like, if a threshold were to be determined, where, where could it start?
I wouldn't think so, yeah.
I wouldn't think so, either.
The timeframe, we have plenty of time, we went smooth, and, I don't know. The timeframe, we have plenty of time, it went smooth, and, I don't know how many days have.
Do you have any other, like, side effects for neighborhood? The size and effect?
But again, that's subjective, you know, it's not a specific size, or there's any.
And in that case, would you say if you have more than X number of a letters, a preliminary conceptual complication is required, you, I mean, I'm.
I'm just trying to, I don't know how, you know, how to define it, but.
If it was four stories, I'd say yes.
Perhaps if we could contact, um, the individual that presented the second block, and find out how they've set it up, or they, you know, how she set it up with her planning board, to require that.
Second block, I'm sorry.
In this, um.
Oh, in the thing.
Again, that, that they have, you know, like, you know, it's.
They should be on tape now, you should be able to give it.
Yeah, it is on tape, yeah. But if, you know, if we could inquire as to how they set it up, or how she set it up, perhaps I can answer a number of our questions, give her some solid footing.
Well, to move things along.
Sorry.
We're in, you know, we're, we're still doing our site plan review regulations, and that could be part of our site plan review regulations, but it sounds like we need more research on that, as to how it's done, how it can be done, if it can be done, and if we should even be doing it. So, tonight, we didn't have anything else in the site plan regulations. Go ahead.
Instead of plants, okay, if you want to.
Right, because we're doing the regulations, you know, discussing those.
So, this is back to the three-inch caliper tree, um, and we got the, the, um, the opinion from the congregation commission that they were talking about, they, they're right.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it would be really good for us to, um, use the standards, and I'm not sure how to list, I actually, I wrote up some stuff, okay?
And this is how far off the ground is measured, is that where you're getting it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's decide on that, and where, are you on a specific page?
Um, no, I'm, I'm doing a little bit of background information, because I just want us to kind of put all this in perspective, okay? And, um, I think many of us wrote things, right? And we think of different sizes of plants and whatnot, what we're talking about, what we're asking developers to install in commercial situations, it's not stuff that we homeowners, unless we own that, we have the capacity to do, okay? So my point is, none of us is gonna ever install a three-inch caliber tree, likely, ourselves, because we will have to dig a hole, we're gonna excavate a root ball, okay? We will purchase a tree that has a root ball that is somewhere between thirty and forty-six inches wide, and it's gonna weigh around six hundred and fifty pounds, okay? And then we're gonna have to, like, get that home, and dig a hole that is, um, have all this.
But if we aren't gonna be doing it, though, why are we discussing it?
Because, um, to get to the point of recommending smaller trees, um, as homeowners, we're used to installing smaller trees, and we can manage, okay? But we have different needs as homeowners, right, we, we have plenty of time, we're on the tax, we're on the, we watch it grow up, but we have a, a responsibility to the other citizens in the town to ask developers to put in larger stock and install it properly, and, um, because A, they have the equipment to do it, and B, it's gonna give us the quick results, the much quicker results, but the screening and the aesthetic benefits that we're asking for, so. So, that's why Matt's gonna hold the line on the three inches.
Hold the line, oh, you're meaning three-inch diameter tree, yes.
Three-inch caliber tree measured at six inches above the ground.
Okay, six, that was the thing we were missing, how high above the ground we're gonna measure it, so, six inches above the ground seemed to be reasonable for everybody, so.
Is there any deviation, plus or minus, like, say, like, even just quarter of an inch?
Usually, when in, in the listings, you know, in the wholesale nurseries, they, they, they go by half inch, so it'll be like two to three and a half inch tree.
Okay.
Yeah, so yes, there is, but we could say three inches.
We have another, do you remember what a three inch?
Well, one of them is on page seventeen, I think it appears a few places, like, they're added everywhere.
One question, though, like, logistically, so if I order a three-inch tree from a nursery, right, I may not be on site to pick out and verify every tree that's coming out of there.
They've got a whole block of, okay?
But would they, um, is it industry practice, is there, will they potentially deliver a tree that's two point seven five inches?
Probably not, did you get one of these?
I, I didn't yet.
So they're actually standards, okay, a legitimate nursery is going to, you know, fulfill your order and give you the sized tree that is passing by.
I have a problem, talking about trees, so many platforms are, uh, worse type. One time, my ex-wife asked me to hang pictures, and I said, okay, how fine you want it, she goes, eyeball up, well, I have trouble.
That's only your eyeball, that's only two feet.
So, unless you have a specific measure.
That's why he said six feet.
Yeah.
Six inches, right?
Six inches, six inches.
So that, we've got that nailed down, six inches.
Thank you.
And you can see that eyeballing.
Eyeballs, nice, okay, so.
The person, Stephanie Verdi, is the one that did that block.
Could you spell that last name for me?
V E R D I E.
So, Richard, do you mind if we move along with the, um, site plan regulate, I mean, move along, so we can get them, um, at a public, we have to have a public hearing to, to approve them and all that type of stuff?
Yeah.
Um, and we can continue talking about that and, and the preliminary design, like, you're talking about, and see how it might be implemented, but, I think we ought to get going with our rights and get them approved, and get, use them, and maybe.
I did notice one more thing when I was kind of combing through, um, the approval section, so, in the draft, it's on page twelve, um, number five expressed as a Roman numeral, I don't know if anybody has their draft from previous meets with them. So number five, it says, after vote of approval, the approval becomes effective when three copies of the site plan are signed by the chair of the planning board. No site plan shall be signed until all conditions relatively approval are placed on the plan. The board receives final unconditional approval from the Sloughy Fire Department, and the plan is signed by the property owner, the applicant, and/or a registered engineer or surveyor. That last part of it being signed by the property owner, the applicant, and/or a registered engineer or surveyor, I'm a little bit confused by that, and that just might be my reading of it, but I feel like we need to look at that line.
We usually never have the property owner sign it, we have, the engineer has to sign it, so she may have to sign it.
They sign a letter saying that somebody can speak to it, or.
Right, there is.
Okay, so is that really all that?
So I think, yeah, I think you're right, that isn't on the plaque, so we probably shouldn't.
Should we take the property owner off of that?
Yeah, property owner, and the applicant, because we never do that.
Okay, that was easy, thanks, sorry, I just thought, I was like, whoa, whoa.
Good catch on there, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so you wanted to go to public hearing, I wanted to go to legal first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, gotta go.
So, do we feel like, once I get all of these, um, changes today?
The ones we did tonight, right?
Tonight, we're ready for me to send it to legal, so that you guys can work on public hearing, and then we can keep looking at, we can amend it again for the, um, preliminary complication.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can find out how they did it.
So then everybody's okay with that, if, if Sarah puts a change in, we talked about tonight, she just sends it right on to legal, and then we can look at it, or we can look at it a copy anyway.
Do you guys want me to send a, a copy out to everybody, just for your own personal preview, so you can be like, this looks like everything we said we were gonna do, and if you disagree, then we'll just discuss it at the next meeting again before I send it to legal?
Or you can do, like, put, like you do with these, just put them out there, so, inside your office, so we just grab them and look at them.
They'll just email if you don't want to kill the trees.
Okay, I'll send it to legal, so we can move along.
The table of contents.
Oh, I was, yeah, I was gonna fix that one to get it done.
All right, and that's a consensus, then, that we're gonna send it, or if Sarah's gonna send it right off to legal, and there'll be copies available electronically for us to look at, and then maybe.
And I'll make hard copies after legal approves.
Yeah, yeah. And then, good, okay.
Are they planning to, um, track changes, some things, and know what they?
It depends which lawyer I send it to, I'm just curious to know. Sometimes I get a scan back with notes all over it, so, that's kind of what I'm expecting.
Coffee stains.
Yep, yeah, you, you know, you've seen them.
So let's see, we did regulations, we did talk about that conditional approval that's in there, I wanna forego a plan reading workshop, and, during the meeting, and have one another time.
I have a question, because from what I've worked on, it's more of a, uh.
Water bottle ready.
Can we do something to further validate this use of waters?
How mixed residential and business?
Still has to. Still has to be in the zoning. That's what I say, you know, it's lingering our permit.
The zoning is your permit.
It is our, that's exactly our.
Yeah, slightly different, but it's.
That annoys the daylights at this next year's.
Right, so you just create a warrant article and change it something, yeah.
See if, and if it gets voted on.
Bring it, you bring it to us and see if we like it. But you just have to look at how things are going, I mean, everything changes, it.
Oh, well, speed.
The office building's going away, you know, you're gonna probably be seeing people running services out of their home residents, or a multi-family with a few businesses mixed in, the old taxpayers you're familiar with from New York City, so.
That goes a lot with much as, like, in some locations tonight, where it took the park, I mean, park residential and park business, that is.
You have to change your zoning, because you, right now, in a business, you can do, you can do multi-family housing.
Well, he had, he proposed three initially, I think, right? And in order not to get the variance, he created one to five.
Yeah, you have to buy a zoning.
It also brings up the point in the zoning about the distance between a residential use and a business use, you know, whatever, fifty feet or whatever it is, that definitely is not fifty feet between those two. It's in our zoning like that, you have to have that much between residential use and business use, yeah, it's attached with a, maybe ten feet between there.
It's on the same property.
Contradict, yeah, it's on the same property, but our, our regulations don't make that distinction, I don't think.
Maybe that's why they did the mill, and they bought every property around it, and the mill owned all the houses.
They did, that's right. Speaking of the mill, they're gonna, I think, someone before, have they been in?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we're not, we're not ready for a preliminary yet, but their, um, shoreline, the Urban Act shoreline exemption was approved by DES, so they're actually probably gonna start putting together plans. Their demo grant was also approved, so they'll start putting together the demolition of the interior of the park that will be redeveloped as housing, or as proposed to redevelop as housing. Oh, that's one you may be seeing soon, we do have a variance coming up, because someone wants to operate childcare out of an office area at the mill, so if they, if their variance is granted, they'll be in here for site.
I'm wondering if there's gonna be an issue with parking, because that parking lot on the side is not very big.
For the daycare or the housing?
Right, for the total complex, where they get everything in there.
Right across the street on the corner where the Hughes house used to be, they own that lot.
Yeah, I know, but still, that's.
Pretty good touch.
It's point nine acres, you know. But then again, we have to prove it, because they're gonna put pavement down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was a big, big step. But, yeah, probably gonna use it for parking, so. Any other business that may be required?
Well, I just want to mention again, I mentioned to Sarah tonight, we're gonna have to be working on some kind of, uh, or, uh, zoning for your solar, the one we proved up here, because some of them coming in might wanna be bigger, where do we want them, how big do we wanna allow them, things like that, and also EV stations. And the problem I see with the EV stations, this was in one of our programs here, is that we have parking requirements on all our, if market basket comes and says, well, everybody's going EV, so we wanna put, um, EV stations in there, well, they're gonna take up parking space.
We have the, with vacant, vacant lot, with lots of empty, well, lucky inside.
Well, they do, but then again, you're gonna have to stop, and you still gotta have some kind of regulations on it, because they're gonna make that into a parking lot, because you gotta pack your car to use EV station. Those also come with transformers, uh, transformers are so many, I don't know what it is, but I think we need to kind of zoning on that.
Well, designate what we treat it as, you know, whether it's a retail sales or something like that, because we're gonna charge them for charging their car, right? Charge, no charge, so they're gonna be selling something now, so it's a retail, I guess, establishment.
So I can see a conflict with what we require for parking space.
Well, don't we already have one coming at us down the pipe, because we have the transportation center, on verse twelve.
The old Thomas Transportation, yeah.
Let me jump into the solar, the solar orders that was wrapped up by Matthew, I think, on, on one.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that is currently being reviewed by the energy commission right now, or the first draft, second draft would be next month, that should be the final draft, I think this congregation commission is asked to see it in Tambers, they might look at it around that same period. And then I'll, you know, Sarah and I will review it, and then it'll go to you guys, so it's on the horizon, um.
Good.
Where is that?
Uh, that would be the, uh, energy commission will be here, for here.
Any highlights on it, anything comes to mind, you know, you've seen it?
I've seen it, but it's, it feels very jargony to me.
Yeah, it needs more work than that.
Yeah, so Peter Burrows, and Hughes as the baseline, I have worked with one in Milton as well, Milton's like a twelve-page piece with examples, and it was a bit more, sorry, than what Peter Burrows has, so we're hoping to try to find a mix between the two. Really, the question right now, we're, we're looking into is ground mountain, according to those graphs, are, you know, example from the front yards, only first to the backyards, so how do you create a fair and equitable way where people can put solar, or solar panels in the front of their house? But they can't put ground mountains around the front of the house, so it's, it's those different questions that we've had, that we're looking to, also the idea of turning people, particularly strips of farmland into large solar fields, uh, how will we manage that, especially the land that's there? So, those are some of the questions that we're, we're looking into, and we asked the other.
Yeah, that'll be interesting, that'll be a couple of late nights on it.
Yeah, I'm excited.
You get into a lot of, you get into a lot of problems with solar panels, it's like we were discussing here, when we approved that one up there, is, they are not as green as people think they are.
Hey, if you wanna throw in one million some.
California's facing that issue.
And EV cars on it, EV cars actually have a bigger carbon footprint than, yes.
And it's probably gonna be some federal law that's superseded.
Electric charging station powered by generator.
Yeah, yeah, well, plus the minerals that you, you have to mine to get the battery, child labor, slave labor, very toxic materials.
Brandon knows about slave labor.
Yeah, yeah, well, look at where it grew up.
That's right, and, so, is there anything else that we need to discuss at this meeting?
I just said the great word.
Motion for adjournment, I, is there a second?
Yes.
Is there anything further discussed?
I was waiting for you.
And all those in favor, indicate that they have a right.
Aye, aye.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three, or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.